For Thursday, March 10, 2022 is called to order. The city wants to welcome everyone that's in person and on Zoom. I'd like to make sure that we remind everyone to silence their cell phones. And then everyone on Zoom stays muted unless you are, you raise your hand by pressing star nine. And then you can press star six to re-mute. So the star nine will wait, wait, raise your hand so that Michael can let us know to recognize you. Thank you very much. So can we have a roll call?
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Ameruso?
Here.
Councilmember Sim?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Here.
Mayor Kleinfelder?
Here.
Thank you.
Can we stand for the, stand for pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands our nation under God, with this world, the union of us all.
You have any vocation to speak? Okay. I would entertain the motion on item number two. Approval of the city council regular meeting agenda.
I made a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I do want to make a clarification that the agenda for March 10th is referring to an agenda for February 10th. So we'll just correct that date in this motion.
Yes. I made my motion to Mayor Quinbals. I second all that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for regular meeting for March 10th, 2022. Roll call, please. I almost messed up, right?
Councilmember. Sorry, Councilmember Ameruso?
Aye.
Councilmember Sim?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelder?
Aye.
Motion passes by Vice Mayor.
Okay, item number three on the agenda is public comment. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda, they do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker submitted form to the city clerk or following the COVID-19 advisory instructions noted on the first page of this agenda. Speakers will be called upon by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and to please state their name and the community of residence. But doing so, either of those things is not required. Under provisions of the Government Code, the city council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be an emergency of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action that arose after the posting of this agenda. So is there any public comment cards that came in?
No.
Is there anyone in City Hall that would like to have anything to say during public comment? Come on, you guys. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak during public comment?
Yes, we have Dr. Amy Chan.
Okay, she's recognized.
Hi, me. I took a look at the agenda and I just wanted to make a quick comment. A point of information really about the edible food waste. And I understand that's on your agenda and I'm not familiar with your plans for that. But I wanted to put a bug in everyone's ear about the community garden and the fact that there have been installed there two food waste receptacles that are not being used. And I think it's because usually from my own experience, by the end of the season, the plants that you have to throw away are just very woody or sticks. And they don't decompose really well. So I tend not to use it because it's pretty far from my home. But, and it's not gigantic, but it may be of some use. I know that there's going to be some public facilities through ACES and that type of thing. But I just wanted to bring that up and remind you guys that we have one over there that's not being used. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. I wanted to advise you, I tried to wave. We can't discuss things during public comment. They are an agenda item. So I just wanted to let you know. We will, I hope you're still here for the agenda item and we'll have some discussion. Because all your points are valid. Thank you very much for participating. John Coburn is recognized.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here not to be recognized, but to recognize the job well done by Rex Officer for the last three years. I was on the council and we respected Rex. And he's done a very good job for in that tenure. Many achievements over and above what was we had expected and planned. Basically, he's done a great job and he's wishing the best for all of them.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak during public comment? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Michael?
Uh, no hands.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four on the agenda, appointments and presentations. We have an appointment this evening of a planning commissioner by Councilmember Ameruso.
Um, I'm going to appoint, sorry, before you do that, I want to make sure we get help comment for this as well. Everyone deserves a public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before.
Yeah.
Norris.
Is there anyone here that would like to comment on an appointment to the planning commission? I'm, I'm like counting to ten for I'm forty, just three.
That's good. Just do a quick check with Zoom.
I got it.
No one on Zoom.
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to wave their hands down and speak on item number four on the agenda, an appointment to the planning commission?
No raised hands.
Okay, then we'll move on to Councilmember Ameruso and his appointment to the planning commission.
So, so as I said, I wanted to appoint any council to the planning commission as my planning commissioner and I like the, she does a very job and blurs this. And a positive member of our community.
Thank you, Peter. So item number five on the agenda is our consent calendar items. Um, I only have one correction. It's not a correction because the resolution for item number five point five includes the word "that" in the first whereas section. Because I sent out two different emails, as soon as I sent out an email, I said, oh, I need words. So I sent out the other one and that Dana hadn't received that one. So we corrected it in here, so we'll correct it in the record well. Does anyone else have any comments on the consent agenda? Does anyone from the public request information regarding items on the consent agenda? Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I made a motion to approve the consent calendar with the corrections of Mayor Kleinfelder. I'm sorry.
It's been moved to second to approve the consent agenda with one minor correction. Although, yeah, I almost did it. Roll call, please. There are resolutions on the consent calendar.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Ameruso?
Aye.
Councilmember Sim?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelder?
Aye.
Thank you. I guess the motion passes.
Item number seven on the regular agenda is discussion regarding Lodge Hill After School Program, KAP. Do we have a staff report?
We do. I just got to get.
Mayor Council, as requested, Councilmember preview the after school program of the Lodge Hill. Currently, the Amber County Recreation Agency is providing a program. Concerned that that was, was that not being utilized as much as should have ever not. So really, this is a um, I do have a, I got ahold of Jason, who is a Parks and Rec coordinator. That's, I'm sorry, coordinator. And I asked him, he just had a date, so he said, we apologize if you couldn't hear, but he would like to come in the future just to discuss what's currently going on with the organization. But here's what he had said. In regards to the cap at Lodge Hill, we do have a slow start, including the spotty attendance. I could do COVID and and spend a few days with zero. Have program with new curriculum. To provide play, healthy snacks, et cetera. And then holding steady with the tendency through three and five. The other but I strongly believe he is benefiting from this number. And will grow as we move forward away from the pandemic. My recommendation to not test the planning itself, at least have a full school year. August to May, COVID. As we've processed this issue with any of our programs this year. He did send us an invoice that is not to the point of being brought here yet, but it was for the mid-year, which is $9,000 of the expenses being spent. He did have a $4,000 credit. So we have figured that will make it to probably excellent. The agreement didn't see. He did not pay minimum participation tax. Put in there that hey, have, have some some kind of accounting process saying, hey, it's not supposed to be evaluated at mid-time.
I think I'll start with council because comments from the public might be a reaction to what council has to say as a discussion. So Vice Mayor Ackerman, if you could lead the discussion?
Sure, and I also had exchanged an email with Justin a while ago. He shared the same. Um, just nothing to do with the quality of the program. And it, what started out as I was driving by hoping to drop in and just check it out. This was, this was actually weeks ago. And, and there was nobody there. And, and since then, I've driven and, and there's been people here. So I'm wondering about the attendance. I mean, I did drive by today. Off the plane, and the kind of staff was there. So my concern is I just want to make sure that we're getting the value for the money. So thank you. Put this on the agenda.
Councilmember Sim, did you have anything to add?
I do. I think, I think gentlemen, that's correct. It was a tough year. Yeah, I think next year we need to take a little hard look at it, maybe keep a, keep an eye on it month to month rather than throw 18,000 dollars at it. You know, say this, if they're here, maybe we do break it down into smaller pieces so that we can keep a watchful eye. I don't know what the numbers are in the past. Present is like five cases a time. That's fine. And that's a good thing. But like, council I remember I went by four or five times, there wasn't nobody there. And so it, I'm not willing to, to throw it under the bus. I think next year we take a single hard look at it. We just, again, throw 18,000 dollars at it and say, I hope it works. Maybe put it, break it down into four sections, do some goals there.
Councilmember Ameruso, this is, you know, dear, your first, I know you have something to say.
Well, that was a pretty instrumental bit with Sargent. Yeah, and it's been a very good program. COVID unfortunately killed things for everyone on this program. So, yeah, and I agree with everything you're saying. Yeah, I see, fine. I mean, three, three kids are still rest, so three kids there. You know, make it worth something, three or five. I mean, but again, we paid for the bucket. You know, it'd be, I move what I would say. So I think I agree to wait to get a full year of away from, you know, the harsh, harshness. We just have to help the parents trust. Kids start to, you know, there really was a very progress. You know, keep our kids off the street and doing stuff at school, getting help at homework. My son went to it. Keith's son went to it.
Son.
Sorry.
Son, I saw him again.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, and it just really was, just, you know, it's something that really, that, that's, I mean. My turn?
Okay. I was going to piggyback on Councilmember Ameruso, yes, both of our children are kind of on. No, not your, I'll, I'll leave, I'll leave, I'll leave there. But yes, my daughter, Corrie, she went to it on many occasions. But with also that being said, we need to really think about what our population here is. I do think COVID is a big part of this. But I know that right now, I'm coming home from work, I see kids all over the place and I'm going, oh, yeah. And not that I don't want every easy term of crowd kids, but I, I like my kids' crowd like sometimes. You know, and I'm going, I just don't think that they know that the programs will fall right now. And, but I do agree.
Well, that's been my issue last year when this came to council, is the accountability. And because there's never really been an audit of the program. And it, and to my mind, if there's, you know, what, how many families are benefiting for $18,000 with us? And that is, that is our responsibility. So we still have a contract with them, we're going to uphold the contract. But I would just like a different level of accountability before we sign the new contract for next year. So if anyone doesn't have anything else to add, I'm going to open it up to the public.
Yeah. I mean, this is great. Is this ever going to put on the
I, I I'm sure we have put it on just because it's one of those, we do that with that pool and everything. But it doesn't mean that it can't go on again.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Are we fresh? I think the, the red department is very open to whatever. You know, they do have an accounting, like what you're talking about with the pool. And that might be the simplest thing is to tell them we'd like to see an accounting process that Mayor's kind of looking for. The pool tells us the daily average attendance, how much they pay. Here, and things like that. So maybe that might be an early suggestion, maybe they just take that up chart without having, you know, on there.
And I think the flyer that Vice Mayor Ackerman just referred to probably has been in the Tuesday envelopes at school several times. You guys know about the Tuesday envelope?
I haven't seen one in a while.
So is there any member of the public that is in City Hall that would like to speak on this agenda item? Frank makes me wait, I'm done talking to them. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to raise their hand and speak on this agenda item?
No raised hands.
Are there any other comments from council? Because I think this was put on here not for an action item, but for discussion and to bring awareness. Is everyone satisfied with the discussion? Okay, moving on. So item number seven. Item number seven point two, informational update regarding reinstatement of water shut offs and penalties. So staff can read this, please.
Mayor Council, this right here is truly what it is, is informational for the council, so when you start being the phone calls. The governor, his executive order, when it was put into place, indicated that we could not shut the water and could not do a, that they weren't paying their water bill or delinquent charges. And we have not applied to that. We've kind of kept you up to date as it's still in place as the governor's order extended. So the governor rescinded that order, it is now done. So we will revert back to our existing ordinances and policies separate this board. Where we will start with the next willing cycle, notifying people that, hey, this is the order. This is, you have to pay your bill. If you don't, the consequences are listed. It will show the ordinance so they can find it, understand what it is. We will also explain to them how the policies are carried through, the 24-hour losses and shut off losses. And we also will still maintain the ability, if someone comes in and says they can't pay, afford it, we can work a payment plan with them. Or we can see if they actually qualify for supplemental assistance. Or we can see if they actually qualify for supplemental assistance through the current COVID assistance program. So we're not telling people absolutely that we're done, but we're letting you folks know and the public through this forum and through our website and Facebook and our water bill itself, that the governor says it's time that people have to pay.
That was going to be my only comment is that we have a very user-friendly educational process in the water bills and explain why, how this came about and why, and that there are several options. I think the options are really important. And are we still continuing to do anything in English and Spanish?
We're meeting all the labor requirements, our bills are decided. Some of them went for start, the notices thing part, that was the IBA Spanish part. We have had some contact with, it's not in place yet, but to provide a translation service for us on the phone, because we don't have any Spanish speakers here that are compensating, to be Spanish speakers, but then say, so if we have some amendment that speaks Spanish, we anticipate that we'll have that phone link program, and besides the Spanish, it's fifty languages for fee, obviously. And then they'll also translate into languages that are ready for. So for now, I can work in compliance with the, our best.
When I want to post something, I just go to my favorite Mexican restaurant, and Rosie says it's good to go.
Michael, you just said you cannot have lunch with your room, no. We thought that Google is not the most efficient translator because of the dialects.
Well, there's so many.
Few times that didn't work.
All right, the city's current policy is to pay the Spanish speaker at the high school. Please, please try and break those.
Does anyone on council have any questions regarding this informational item that, basically, the rundown from the staff report is the governor's executive order has expired. So the status quo will revert to the status quo, but I think that what we're trying to decide here is how friendly we want to be about that, make sure everybody gets the information.
Go forward.
What?
Go ahead, Ford.
Yes.
My question is, is the making effort to collect any of these fees that, I understand the water can turn off, but the language fees that folks didn't pay, is that just being waived up until now? How's that being held?
We don't waive it, it just is held, we hold it, and there's no interest secured. Exactly. They still have water.
There's still a problem.
Is that right, Michael?
The only waiver of anything happened is there's no penalty, so there's no extra penalty interest like we were saying, everything else that, that goes out, I think we had a couple people over a thousand dollars. Oh, yeah, some, actually, Spanish speaker, we're very able to give, grant you, fill out everything qualified, so we're getting that system. I think, I started to talk about, but I think that's one thing we're going to try to do. There's, I think, a surprisingly low amount of people that are significantly behind it. And so it's few enough that we're going to try to reach out eventually as much as possible and say, here's what your options are.
Yes, absolutely, thank you. We ready to go to the public, folks? Is there anyone in City Hall that would like to speak regarding this issue on the agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to raise their hand and speak regarding this in, this issue on the agenda?
Nobody raised.
Okay, so I think there's a consensus for staff that we're taking the information and we're, you know, we have any stumbles, they come back to us, but otherwise, we understand what's going on. Is that fair enough? Okay, moving on. Item number seven point three, introduce and waive first reading by title only of the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash O two, adding chapter eight point two seven to title eight of the Plymouth municipal code relating to edible food recovery.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. For your review and discussion tonight, we have Joanna Jen from our office who will kind of give you the thumbnail sketch of the ordinance presented before you. As you recall, she did provide some information regarding this ordinance at the February tenth meeting, and she's one of our experts on this at the firm, so she's just presenting this.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the edible food recovery ordinance that was previously previewed to council last month. This would simply satisfy the requirements under the SB thirteen eighty-three regulations and establishes an edible food recovery program. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
I have a question. Passing the ordinance just says passing the ordinance. That doesn't put us in complete compliance. We have to do something to be in compliance. Is that correct or incorrect?
The ordinance would put the city in compliance. The SB thirteen eighty-three regulations requires the city to adopt enforceable mechanisms in order to implement the SB thirteen eighty-three regulations. The SB thirteen eighty-three regulations include many requirements, including organic waste collection requirements. However, the city did qualify for a rural exemption waiver and was granted one by Cal Recycle, so the ordinance does not include any provisions related to organic waste collection. However, since the SB thirteen eighty-three regulations do require the city to establish an edible food recovery program that would require businesses that generate edible food to donate that food to food banks or food pantries or other food recovery organizations, that is why the ordinance is coming before council tonight.
I had a second question about, this is a change to the municipal code, it's the addition of an ordinance, so we don't have a public hearing scheduled. So we're introducing and waiving first reading, but when are we scheduling a public hearing for, for an actual change to our municipal code?
Madam Mayor, there is no requirement to hold a public hearing. Generally, for the introduction of or adoption of ordinances, there is no public hearing required unless state law requires it. And in this case, state law does not require a hearing.
Thank you. I just really like to offer the public a notification of these types of changes of I'm being on public hearings.
Can I add a couple things? Both of your questions I'll answer. You asked about establishing the food recovery program. You're also incorrect. There was something else that we had, the agreement to get the grant with the county. So that's where our establishment programs can come in for implementation. So we'll be doing that countywide and that of, I mean, the requirements. So that's not specifically covered in the staff report, but that is the other thing that you have to do, and is also in process. The second part about the public notice, not necessarily a hearing, but I believe notice, we require five days in advance for a second reading, not necessarily a public hearing.
Yeah, well, there's not going to be a public hearing for the second reading.
But there, but there will be, I believe, a summary published.
Yeah, so there are pre, pre and post summaries that are published before, before and after the second reading, and that is required basically of all.
So there will be some additional notice beyond the agenda.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Is there anyone in City Hall that would like to speak on this issue on the agenda? Dr. Amy Champ, are you still there?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You have the floor.
Okay, yes, well, I just, I think that even though there's not a requirement for a hearing, I think that it may behoove the council to perhaps invite the businesses that are engaged in food production, like, for example, the restaurants especially, and maybe a couple of the tasting rooms, to have some input about their processes, because even though you're not required to collect because of this exemption, that, you know, the home waste, it seems like there needs to be, you know, a recognition that this might put a burden on the businesses and maybe just, you know, I would put it back to the council, a suggestion that you invite those businesses to come to some sort of consultation where they can actually provide input on how they would be going about donating it, and, you know, it may add to their expenses, especially with the price of gas and that type of thing. You may consider, I would say my second and final comment would be to consider speaking with the pastor at the church here in Plymouth that is actually running a food bank on Thursdays to see if there's a way for them to enter an agreement with the city, because that may cut down on, you know, the time expended and the gas expense for some of these local restaurants. So that's my final comment.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, if I may add some additional information based off of the public comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So this edible food recovery program and the ordinance would only apply to certain type of business for the purposes of donation requirements, and that is a commercial edible food generator as defined under the regulations. Currently, there is only one commercial edible food generator in Plymouth, and that is the Pokerville Market. And so this would only require the market to donate any food that is good and fit for human consumption that would otherwise be thrown away. They wouldn't said donate that to food banks or food pantries.
And to add a second piece, Dr. Champ is on, I believe, the countywide program. We already be working with the food bank to. Because I think there's just the one in the county. So that would be what we're looking for initially. It's very preliminary so far, we had a couple of Zoom calls, but I think that's probably also questions.
Well, and I think it would be important, since we are involved with that countywide level in order to comply, that it be large workshops as a part of the implementation and working with Intertake Food Bank and even other, possibly other food banks in the county. There's Food Pantry in Fiddletown, there's the one that was mentioned in Plymouth as well. So I think what I was looking for is, I was involved in the last round of garbage recycling, and it never stops. So I, if, just because we're getting waivers, if we aren't letting people know what this is required now, then when it gets even stricter, it could be difficult to catch up. So I think those workshops could be really important.
Madam Mayor, if I may add to a great comment that you mentioned regarding the waivers? Thank you. The waiver that the city qualified for and received on January first of this year is good for five years, so it would exempt the city from any organic waste collection requirements until twenty twenty-seven.
Except Pokerville Market, correct?
Right, so that, this, this issue for the edible food recovery program only applies to the Pokerville Market for the purposes of requiring them to donate edible foods.
And the exemption is related to, I believe, bases essentially, or having to pick up on those trashings. And as a practical matter, so SB thirty has multiple parts, it's good discussion. So I would try to come back and explain it a couple times because it's, it's extremely complicated, and the rights are like this, and it includes other parts of state law, but that's a different discussion for another day. But what we'll say is, the main component, and the city dodges it, frankly, from a certain perspective, depending on your views, maybe you don't think we, you know, maybe some would say we're not dodged, but from an economical perspective, we dodge it, just because for the jurisdictions that have to implement organic waste collection, all of their garbage rates are going to go significantly up. We're seeing twenty percent in some places, which is a huge amount, especially with inflation and everything else, your cost of gas, et cetera, going up. So to not have to implement that is a huge, you know, is frankly a huge compensations or at least cost mitigation factor. The other components are what are on the table, which is this being the edible food recovery program, which we have to adopt in ordinance. The, the tier one generators are implemented, just, just Pokerville, not any other restaurants or any else. And for Pokerville, it's simply donated food to food banks, such that they were going to throw away anyways. So that's kind of a long story.
So the motion this evening would be just to waive first reading and?
Yeah, I think it says to introduce and waive by title only an ordinance of the City Council.
Yeah.
Adding chapter that whole day.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to. Introduce a way to first reading by title only of the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash O two, adding chapter eight point two seven to the title eight of municipal code relating to the edible food recovery.
I'll second their motion.
It's been moved and seconded, too. We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, I also wanted to point out that in, on the ordinance, I have it highlighted here, it says introduce on the tenth day of March, I mean, on the twenty-fourth day of March. I think it should be the tenth day of March.
Yeah, that can be, this is going to come back to a second reading, so that part is going to change anyways.
Okay.
So. That's a type of apple thing that can be clarified later, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call vote. Councilmember Amber Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember Tim?
Aye.
Councilmember Wade?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Klein Felder?
Aye.
Motion passes, I guess, thank you.
Item number seven point four on the agenda is review and approval of employment agreement with Michael Colton for interim city manager and finance director services for the monthly amount of ten thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Can't believe there's something out there.
It's, that's one of the parallels of the Brown Act, we say a lot of things out there. But in all seriousness, this item is simply designed to provide a conglomerate services. As you know, this is your Rex Hall's performance last day as city manager and retiring. Council given a direction at the last council meeting to. Um, council had given a direction at the last council meeting to explore potential interrelationship, contractual relationship with Michael Cole. Um, and after some discussions and negotiations with, uh, Michael and, and the labor negotiators, um, we have a recommendation to approve a contract. Um, the contract, some of the highlights, contract is essentially, um, at will, and it has an indefinite time period, uh, upon thirty days' notice, um, it can be terminated. Um, Michael is required in the contract to, uh, essentially keep office hours or be in the direct from the City Hall. Monday through Thursday, between hours at ten AM and six PM. It's still full-time payoff. Uh, so he has to meet his forty hours per week if he wants to do that on Friday or whatever. That's, uh, obviously for working home, I think that's the plan, but he has to at least be in the city four days a week. Some of the things that are mentioned in the sample form, but I'll just make sure it's clear for the public. Um, you have, uh, Michael's currently making an annual scheduled eighty thousand dollars a year. This is effectively taking his salary, including the increase to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, I believe. If you annualize it, obviously this is a monthly salary, so, um, it's one twenty-eight divided by, by twelve, which is the ten thousand dollar figure. Um, the agreement stipulates that at the cessation or expiration of the agreement, that, um, if Michael is still employed with the city, he will, uh, immediately revert to his current role as finance director, uh, and city manager on the exact same terms and conditions of his current employment um, as of March tenth, twenty twenty-two. I think that those are the high, uh, features, uh, of the agreement. I'm happy to answer any other questions, uh, the council may have.
Is there any discussion by the council? And you will receive a city issued self?
Sorry, yes, you will. And that is, um, good point, and that is in a contract. At the, the, uh, at the cessation of the duties in this interim role, um, it's a city foul. The city will get that. So.
Um, this is fairly difficult for me because I, we have a community of just a, right around a thousand people. And, um, we're spending other people's money. And I, I know things are expensive, but when you look at it like this, and, and we have, you know, the public has needs. And I, and it's become more heightened during COVID because our office hours were curtailed. But, um, we're spending a lot on salary for one thing, but one of the other things I wanted to mention is we don't, we need to look at later. Right now, we have this interim thing top, looking at, but we probably need to do an internal production audit about all of the, all of the staffing because there's a lack of parity between the public works department and the admin staff. They need to be compensated fairly as well. And I, I know I've mentioned that before when budget things have come up. Um, I think our public works employees, which is really the front line of everything we do, really need to, we need to look at that closely. Does anyone from the public in City Hall have anything to say on this issue?
Yeah, John Coleman, uh, former councilmember. I wish I would, uh, when we hired Rex, one of the problems we had, uh, in the past with Jeff Gardner was it was just overwhelming with the the, the job of, of, um, being the city manager and the head of the state at the same time. And, uh, uh, so I, I hope that that it's, it's, that you can make this very, very short term because it's, uh, um, it's a workload. And, uh, what happens if, um, when we've seen the past six months with cracks because they were over the two positions in one job. The other thing is I'm concerned about is me. Uh, I realize it's a temporary position, but the high cost is just of the hundred and twenty-eight thousand. It's more than, uh, our number one pick. And, uh, in our, um, last selection of city manager, our number one pick was asking less than this a week. I don't remember because of, you know, who I think it was. And, uh, so we're looking at something here that we were trying to work something over a hundred thousand at that time with a big percentage of these in, uh, three years. So what concerns me is that where are you going to advertise for a price range? For city manager, uh, with, uh, this being on the table, it's a current range of pay. So, I think that's if you take a high consideration of that. And, uh, and, and to go on very quickly, I'd like to complain to somebody who's, uh, can do this job. I just, I remember again that we're still less than a thousand people. And, uh, this is a pretty big overhead paper capital for city manager and manager. And, uh, they should, uh, uh, see you, so, keeps that in mind, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Can I say something to Mr. Corr's comments? I do believe that was a, a big discussion. We were going through that at the time, uh, the steel that we're getting at the time and, uh, and how much we are going to have to pay for a city manager. Um, that, that has always been something that has floated around in the five years I've been on council. And I can tell you right now, professional world, the non-professional world, everything about it, try to find an employee right now, and it's almost near impossible. Um, so that just has a lot of concern with me. The rate is the rate. I, that's kind of what we're saying that we're stuck at, but if you only find helpers or surprise that they're stuck in it. And I can't let it go on the record. This is ancient history, but this is prior to any of this. But, you know, when, when Jeff was taken out, that was, uh, very unfortunate situation. And he gave us a good deal for our money. And there was a personal involvement. And so with that being said, the cost of replacing him, well, see, the three hundred thousand dollars to our citizens. And so here we are in a situation, and, you know, the cops have on us. And yes, we are a city of a thousand people, but he's doing two jobs also. So you have to also live in the fact that we're getting two employees for the person one. You know, that's kind of an city manager. And, you know, the costs are there, but, yeah, yeah, short term, we know that, but we're eventually still have to replace him. And we had very small people to call from because no one wants to come work for what we can pay. Because that professional field pays two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars. And, yeah, bigger, bigger saves, obviously. But, but to come to work for a little tiny city costs a lot of money. Yeah, it's the, we, we, we're, we're a small city. We still have the big city problems, and we start to do all the reporting that, that big cities do, because it's state, federal, and local governments. So we have to keep all of that in mind when we go through this process. Just wanted to add.
Does anyone else in City Hall, member of the public, have anything to say on this issue? Does anyone on Zoom wish to raise their hand and have a comment on this issue?
I don't see anybody raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Dana. So is there any further discussion by the council? Oh, Ryan, hold on just.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, um, I was dismayed when City Hall by Jeff, so I did a very good job. This time I got a very sorry to it. And, um, that would, that would give me a pretty happy, yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Is there any additional council discussion?
Just make one, one comment. I, I think we're, we're lucky that, uh, Michael has agreed to take on dual, uh, dual jobs for, for an additional thousand dollars a week. Uh, we, um, we all talked about that a lot at the, the last meeting. And, uh, I agree, I think we need to find somebody as quick as possible. Sorry, I haven't, I don't know about that yet. Right there. What does that look like to me? Do we, this council, uh, have a, a closed meeting about how we go about moving forward and finding a better, uh, city manager?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll obviously, that'll have to be Jeff has said about the meeting. This was just to kind of get somebody in the chair so we can share continuity services. But I'm sure there will be immediate discussions to the council in the future. Thanks.
I would entertain a motion on item number seven point four.
Um, I make a motion to the approval of the employment agreement with Michael Cole for interim city manager and financial director of services with monthly amount of one zero six 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 seven. Second.
It's been moved to, sent to, to approve, to review and approve the employment agreement with Michael Colton. The amount stated, I can't say it again. Roll call vote.
Can we just do a self-roll call? Forget it, back up. Are you ready?
No, I'm ready, yeah.
Councilmember Emmerusso?
Aye.
Councilmember Sim?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
Mayor Kleinfelder?
Aye.
Motion passes by the yeses. Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda is council, so staff communications. Um, city manager's report is item number eight point one.
Here today.
Oh.
Yeah.
Fancy.
Fancy, fancy. My first official action tonight is going to be fire Michael because I'm still a city manager.
The thing is, takes place right?
What's that?
It just takes place.
Yeah, that, I don't know. Mayor and council, uh, this is my last city council meeting, as you know, and I wanted to make a couple of comments uh, regarding my three years here. Uh, I had asked a request for an exit interview. You know, when people have a, a point, and you are wanting to leave, you want to know why. They want to know what they're going to do, what they thought of things. And the realization is really fast that the guy who does the exit interviews of employees is the manager. Well, I couldn't interview him. I decided to interview myself. I have a standard list of questions that I ask them from the Department of Employment. Is, what is the reason for leaving? Uh, how was the job structured? And was I given the tools to do the job? Uh, did I have the opportunity to learn and grow while in the job? How do I feel about my direct leaders? Uh, what did I like most about the job in City? And what are my recommendations for improvement? And then was I a leader and, you know, was an employee, a good employee? So, knowing that I, I wasn't going to be able to get that exit interview directly, I answered those questions. Uh, to go through them was my, was my reason for leaving.
Next, um, the agenda item is the city manager's report, which would be related to city management business. So if you'd like to provide in writing to the council your answers, your questions and your answers, I think that would be.
Well, I could sure speed up to one of them.
I think that's.
Best I do not. Why would you do that to me? I just would like to know. That is, this is a business thing. I am the city manager. I am here to say some nice things about this job. I'm here also to talk about the pleasure I had working with each one of them. I'm here to talk about the outstanding employees that are going to continue to work here. I am here to thank the citizens of this community for the opportunity to serve them. But if you choose that I don't do that, that's on you, and I will sit down. But I don't know why you wouldn't give me five minutes at the end of a career to do that. That is one of the problems, you know, maybe one of the reasons why I'm not here. So if you want me to continue, that's on you. Or if the other council would like to.
Thank you very much. Um, I want to explain that agenda items are agenda items. And when it's supposed, if it's agendized as a report, it should be a report related to what happened the, between now and going back to the last report. It's not an, of an overview, that, an overview of an entire career with the community to be something that was provided to the council as a review. Uh, it's not on the agenda.
Can I ask, Brad, is that all right? Brad, give us a weak council.
City manager's report has never been defined at that. So I'm not trying, I'm not going to, um, take any hard lines with that, but, uh.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I want to know.
Thank you.
Still here, call.
Moving on, item eight point two on the agenda is, yeah, council members' reports.
Thank you. Just leaving for the evening.
Councilmember Sim, did you have, uh, anything to report this evening?
Well, only that I'm a little disappointed about this evening is that I, um, I, I felt that the city manager should have five minutes to answer his five questions. And, uh, I was going to ask Mayor, would we consider how this is going to be? Is that, that, that should sell. Doesn't have a comment.
Councilmember White, did you have anything to report this evening?
Oh, good.
Vice Mayor Ackerman, do you have anything to report?
I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
I don't have anything to report this evening as well. So on that, the council is going to move into closed session for this evening. Um, if there are results from the closed session, the attorney will report out after the closed session. The meeting is technically still going until that report out period. Either way, and thank you all for coming.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
It's here unmuted. I can do video too.
We should do video. Right. Are we good?
Yeah.
Council consider one matter in closed session. It received information and provided direction and there's no report of action.